Trustee Trish Robertson. Vice Chair Maricela Pacina. Chairman Travis Manning. Trustee Manuel Godina. And trustee Andrew Butler.
Here.
Voice from above. All right, would you please stand and pledge allegiance. It's just right here on the.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Approval of board meeting agenda postings, Madam Chair.
Chairman Travis Manning and trustees. I request the approval of the special meeting board work session and executive session agenda posting for Monday, September twenty second, two thousand and twenty five. The agenda was posted on Friday, September nineteenth, two thousand and twenty five at four thirty P M. The agenda was posted at the following locations, the Caldwell School District website and the Caldwell District Office.
Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Chairman Manning, I would like to make a motion to approve the board meeting agenda postings for today's date, September twenty second, two thousand and twenty five.
Okay, motion by Vice Chair, do you have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All's in favor? Please say aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. All right. We have our first on our agenda, Principal Tabby Bergman from Wilson Elementary. Thanks for having us here at Wilson Elementary. Appreciate it.
Good evening, Chairman Manning and trustees. Thank you for joining us here at Wilson Elementary this evening. We are excited to share with you about something we've been doing at Wilson Elementary for about four years now. And it's our Wednesday skill groups. I'm gonna step over, can I step over a little bit so I can see? Go ahead, Caleb. Our Wednesday skill groups are groups that help us provide opportunities for both enrichment and skill development for our kindergarten through fourth grade students. So, a little bit about these, how we select students in these groups. So, we have individuals that are identified throughout the course of the year for these groups. And they are identified based on differing, how different needs arise. So, that could be through conversations from teachers to how students themselves telling us about different things that they're experiencing, strengths that we're seeing among students. And then our specialists, our community school coordinator, our counselors or specialists being P E, music, enrichment, and our librarians, they are the ones that are facilitating these groups during open times in their schedule on Wednesdays. And they are also are based on things that we're seeing happening throughout the school. So, we're giving, having opportunities to have, be responsive to these different opportunities. And we'll talk about specifically what those, some of those types of opportunities are in just a moment. So, again, this is our fourth year and we're tracking this information in a variety of ways to see how, what the effectiveness is for students, but then also our school. So, we look at those individuals, we're also looking at the time that individuals are in these groups. So, on Wednesdays, it's for a period of about twenty minutes. But we also want to see the frequency of students, if it's based on maybe a developing skill that they're having. So, are students needing to be in these groups more frequently? Or is it a skill that we're able to meet, provide an opportunity to be in one of these groups? And then we see that need close up. And then also who provided it? So, and that's important when you'll see the type of groups that we're, we're offering. And then also we keep a waitlist. So, for example, if in the spring last year, we knew that we had some students that had that opportunity to be on, in these groups. And it was effective for them because we provided that very early on. So, for example, a learning the ropes at the beginning of the year is one of our groups that we have provided each year. And some of those students that have had that opportunity right from the beginning of the year have had a successful, more successful start to the beginning of the year because they've had an opportunity to be either leaders or also just get an extra little bonus jumpstart to the year by being in that group. And so, we've also kind of monitored that effectiveness of that. And then also, we have some recess groups. We've had, so we've kind of monitored that, but when I say putting them on the waitlist, we put them on there to make sure throughout the year, if we have a, let's say a parent that reaches out to us and shares with us some, something that their child is, is going through. We want to make sure that we keep track of that and so that we can respond and put them on this list. Oh, we have a group starting, we're gonna get them on that group really shortly. So, here's a couple of our groups that we have going right now. I talked about the learning the ropes group, group. We have a theater group that's being offered by our music teacher. We have a new kids on the block. So, we put, this is an example of a waitlist group that we have when we have new students that are coming. We put them in this group so that we can help navigate them, so it's not, navigate them through like, what's going on? Who's, where's the nurse's office? Where's the, meet the principal, all of those pieces that we're not waiting and finding out in, you know, second quarter that we've got these new students that have arrived and we haven't given them an opportunity to learn the different environments across the, across the school and also meet those people and make those connections. So, that's one that we do throughout. Friendship groups, that's navigating those peer, peer conflict. And that can evolve throughout the, throughout the school year. But also we make sure we put leaders in there who do that really well because we want them to also not, to see how that's done and have, have leaders in that group. And then we have, last year we started attendance advocates. And this is done by our community school coordinator. So, we put a, we put a flip on that and had students that may have some, may have had some struggles with this. But we've had them help be advertisement of why attendance is so important. And we're really monitoring that to see if putting them in charge of doing commercials, doing posters, celebrating, helping us celebrate others with attendance and, and teaching others about attendance helps put a flip on that. And so far, some of our students that may have been in that group last year are being, throughout, throughout the year, have then made that progress this year, but then throughout the course of the year, last year, we saw great improvements with that. So, we have, we've flipped the, flipped their mindset on that, not necessarily their mindset, but the, the progress on that. So, those are some of the groups that we have currently going on that. Go ahead, Caleb, sorry. And then here are some of our previous groups that we've done throughout the year. We've, the recess rules and not just having them because it's something they've done, but we've had students that have been excellent leaders in recess rules. Be like our playground, positive playground leaders and stuff. And you'll see it, an example of that here in just a few minutes of a little video. We have art, art clubs. So, having peers work together through doing problem solving and talking and stuff and collaboration, but through art. And again, leaders and that enrichment and skill development. Kindergarten story time, and that's like fourth graders and kindergarteners working on, working together doing buddy reading. Choir, yearbook, some teamwork and cooperation groups. We do toolbox here at Wilson, and so we've had some toolbox groups. Executive functioning, just working on some of those skills. And that's been with, that's been done with a parent, parent input on that. And then puppet pals working on helping just identifying what emotion you're feeling through puppets. So, those are some of our previous groups that we've had going, again, identifying students as, that are needing, that are able to enrich through helping with peers and then also some that just need some skill development in that. This little video that we have from last year is an example of our third grade leadership group from second quarter last year. They, their culminating project was they wanted to make a, have an opportunity to do some modeling and school, modeling and school expectations. And so, they put together a video for their peers. They had had the opportunity throughout the quarter to put into practice, but through supporting their peers and stuff. So, they wanted to make a little video of it. And then this video was used throughout the year for teachers to show in their classrooms, show with individual students at different times on when it was needed. And again, it was some of our students from last year in second quarter. Oh, is it not giving you access? Oh, okay. Okay. And so, they kind of planned out what they wanted to put in the video of different things that they had practiced and collaborated on. And Ms. Nicole, our enrichment specialist is the one that is group.
Quiet and safe place. I remember my quiet, safe place.
These are some of our hallway expectations and playground expectations. They use, and our, we do our public playground, so I have the different right ways to play equipment.
Taking time tool, I take time in and away. Garbage can tool, I let the little things go. Or you could do this. Respirando por fondo, no me voy a calmar. Me voy a calmar, voy a respirar por fondo.
Oracle is students with the best are ones that would be identified by their peers. They were identified, they could find them to get help with knowing what the positive playground's expectations are or help. And then get toolbox tools like they were.
So, what's the set of index cards hanging off there?
Yeah, so let me show you on my, so we have, each of these are our twelve tools that we work through with students and they all have a gesture. And so, when, you know, a student might be having, you know, some big feelings and stuff, there's different tools or for different situations. So, you know, we ask students, you know, what tool might you use to work through this situation? So, like the garbage can tool is one that's a common one. So, it's just like I let the little things go and we, there's an imaginary garbage can and we throw those little things away. So, you know, using, you know, the time tool, you know, using, you know, taking the time, taking time away. Personal space tool, you know, making sure we have our personal space. So, we work through each of the tools, teaching, we start with teaching the twelve tools and then, so they have that awareness of them. And then throughout the course of the year, there's certain tools that we teach at different times so that we're using that common language. And that, you know, we model it as adults as well. And so, that kids have different strategies to help them through different situations. We had our first family night last Thursday night. And one of the things that was led by students within their classrooms and one of the things that we had students do also was taught, teach their family, the members about one of their favorite tools that helps them. And one of the exit questions for families that they could fill out was also, what's a tool that you learned about that you would be able to use at home? And we had great feedback from families like, I could use the garbage pool, like garbage can tool, I can use the taking time tool. And then they explained how, and it's just good, good strategies. We all need some, we all need some of those.
Your toolbox.
Yes, yeah, so we all, all staff members carry this around. And then we have student ones that they can use that they work on in the classroom. And many teachers have them, some individual students have them at their desk. Teachers have them throughout their classrooms that they can, you know, send students to carry around, you know, go get a toolbox, pick a, pick a tool to use, so.
Chairman Manning?
Yeah.
I, Ms. Tabby, I think I saw our, a little girl say one in Spanish, though they have them in Spanish as well. That's awesome.
We, that is not something that the, the toolbox program has for the student ones. We, they do have the parent materials in Spanish. That's something that we have taken the extra step to help make sure that we're providing and stuff. So, we have, if you'll ever, if you're ever out on our playground, we have put the, put them on our big posters in Spanish and stuff. The little cards, we don't have in Spanish, but we've made an effort to help our students with them. But they do have all the parent resources in Spanish that we provide them for.
Okay, I thought she was reading.
She did, yeah, she did, because we made those for her stuff because she was trying to help that, yeah. She did a great job.
That's awesome.
All right, any further questions from Ms. Bergman?
I have to add, so Amber Archibald is a parent of kids came through Wilson.
Yep, yeah, her last one's here, yeah.
I saw her at the high school just a little bit ago and talked, she talked about how that toolbox, she was, she's, it seemed as though she were upset. Her daughter, now I have to do the breathing tool every time I'm upset with the kids.
She says I have to do the breathing. Tape measure, tape measure, it's good, yeah.
Before I say, go clean up your room.
Yeah, it's been, it's been really helpful, so, yeah. Are there any questions regarding this? My last, my last thing, if not, I would encourage you all to come every Friday morning, our last thing that we've started this year. We just had our third one last Friday. We've started Wolverine Rally every Friday morning at eight fifty-five, schoolwide. It's awesome, it's probably my favorite tradition that we've started in my whole time here at Wilson Elementary. And we have a lot of them that I love. But we celebrate kids and staff for random things. Attendance is a big one that we're doing this year, but also just for being different ways of demonstrating respectful, responsible, and safe. And every kid that gets recognized or even staff members, we, they come running through the teacher tunnel. It's really awesome in our hallway, then their name goes up on a Wolverine paw, paw, right across almost from the lunchroom out there. But it's, we were, there was wonderings how we were gonna pull getting kids out of the lunchroom and into the, the gyms by eight fifty-five and ready to go. And we're done by almost about nine oh eight, nine ten. So, it's really quick, it's a great celebration and it's just a real good feel good. So, I encourage you, if you can come any Friday morning, it's, it's, it's pretty exciting and fun to see for all students and all staff, so.
Eight fifty-five?
Eight fifty-five, we start, we start with our school song that was written by our music teacher, Mrs. Hatterley, last year. It's playing, we're singing it, singing it, and then we're, we're celebrating, so it's a good time.
Okay, excellent.
Yeah, it's been great.
All right, any last questions from Ms. Bergman? Comments?
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bergman, appreciate all your work here at Wilson Elementary. Okay, we are moving on to next item on our agenda, which is National School Lunch Week. Ms. Deli Gibson, Director of Child Nutrition for the Caldwell School and Search.
Good evening, Chairman Manning, it's okay. Trustee Superintendent Dr. French. Yeah, National School Lunch Week. So, National School Lunch Week is in October and it is a nationwide celebration established by the USDA to promote the importance of healthy school meals. National School Lunch Week follows the theme every year and this year the theme is to taste the world. Let me try this. There we go. In an effort to participate, we have strategically menued a few fan favorites and are even bringing in a new Mandarin dish this week. Each day, we're also offering an exotic fruit as well as some quick information on where it is cultivated. Students all across the Caldwell School District can expect to see things like dragon fruit, star fruit, and gooseberries on the fruit and vegetable bars this week. We're also encouraging kitchen staff to participate by dressing up in appropriate attire. And everyone from my central office will be out assisting with service and decor this week as well. Some of the decorations include displaying flags of the world and a welcome sign in several languages. This is in no way promoting political, religious, or ideological viewpoints as it is in an effort to promote National School Lunch Week and maintain a neutral and inclusive environment for all students. This year's theme central is on world travel, encouraging students to explore global cuisines and cultures.
I think that's so great because we do live in a, in a world with other people from other countries. And we have so many relationships and friendships with them. And I think it's important to understand that, you know, we're, we're, we're not the only ones here on this planet. Like, we have a huge planet with, you know, brothers and sisters all across this planet who look different, sound different, eat different foods. And it's helpful, I was telling my students actually just today, like, when you have a chance to get out of Caldwell, Idaho, like, do it, like, prostate lines, get out, try things, experiment, see the world and see all the beauty, the beauty of all the diversity that we have. Yeah, Ms. Robertson.
Yes, I have a question. So, are these the posters that are available for us to hang in the schools?
That's correct. So, the intent with these posters is to hang them up in the cafeteria along with other decorations, such as globes and airplanes, things like that.
So, in all of the schools? Or just the high school?
They might be a little different in the high school, definitely in the elementary sites, just because the students are a little bit more involved when it comes to the lunch program. I would say these are appropriate for the high school students as well. I just have not considered decorating. I can get it, yeah, I haven't ordered anything, so I had to present it to you guys first.
How, do you know how big these are?
I know the tree is probably a little bit bigger than this, like, it's supposed to be a whole banner. And the welcome sign is probably half the size of this TV, so they're pretty big.
I love the idea that if they're quality that could be reused.
Oh, yeah.
You know, or left up. But those are, those are actually very well done, I like those.
Yeah, they're fun.
Okay, so this is an action item, right? So, you need approval to.
I do.
What, you probably said it and I didn't catch it, what is, what is the date for the?
It's the week of October thirteen, I'm sorry, I had it on the first slide here.
Okay.
Thirteen through the six, seventeenth, yes, it's a four day week that we have. Yep, thirteen through the seventeen.
I don't have, oh, I didn't do that. Thirteen through the seventeenth, okay.
Okay, we get a motion to approve the National School Lunch Week banners.
Chairman Manning, I would like to make a motion to approve the National School Lunch Week banners as exhibited here tonight.
Okay, do you have a motion, do you have a second?
Second.
So, trustee Godina, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any oppose? Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Gibson, appreciate it. Okay, third item on the agenda, our superintendent search. As you may, may not know, our superintendent has, after, well, after this, this school year, will be retiring. And so, she's spent a lot of years with us, it'll be ten years by then. And, and it's a complicated and complex process and we want to make sure that we have, you know, input from the community and staff and so on throughout this process. And so, we tonight need to figure out if we want to allow the Idaho School Boards Association to assist us in the superintendent's search. And they have, they, they do this all the time. And so, they're gonna present to us sort of, you know, the options that we have. And if we decide to go with them, which options we might use. And so, without further ado, Ms. Katie Russell from the Idaho School Boards Association is here to sort of walk us through that.
Thank you for having me tonight. I am Katie Russell, I'm with the Idaho School Boards Association. I oversee our superintendent's search service. So, I'm excited to join you this evening and share a little bit more about what our service entails. So, in front of you, you have two sheets of paper. One is just a brochure that kind of over, gives you an overview of all of our search service options. And then the other sheet in front of you is just kind of a draft timeline for you to kind of, it helps follow along with the brochure as well. So, ISBA, we are, our superintendent's search service is not like a headhunter type service. We're not going out and finding, you know, the top ten candidates and bringing them in. We're gonna bring in every candidate that applies for your position. And we want to help make sure that your district is, is hiring the best person for the job, for your community, for your schools, for your staff. So, what we do is we have three different options. And it, it really is up to the board on what they feel most comfortable with. But we help the board from either the start of the search, so now until they review applications and then we kind of step away. Or we help the board with a full and complete search where we're there with you every step of the way, assisting you as you collect applications, as you interview candidates, as you do district visits, things like that. So, our options, you can find them on the back page here of your, of your brochure. We have three separate options. So, the first option is the marketing of opening. This is where you, I like to call this a partial search. We'll help you create a brochure to advertise the position. We'll help you with the application. ISBA uses a application portal, it's called Revelus. It was created by the Ohio School Boards Association. So, most school boards associations across the country use this as well. So, it's, it's really great because a lot of superintendent candidates are very familiar with this platform already in Idaho and in the surrounding states. We'll create that application for you and then we'll collect the applications. And while you're waiting for the timeline to close, we'll, I'll be reviewing them, others in our staff will be reviewing these applicants. You know, marking any kind of red flags we might see in them, highlighting anything that maybe the board. Highlighting anything that maybe the board has asked us to keep an eye on. But at the end of the day, we present you with every single candidate that applies. Um, we want you to be making the decision. We don't feel that that's our responsibility, um, or really our expertise. We oftentimes don't live in your community. I, I tend to say that, but I actually do live in Caldwell. So, um, that's different. But, um, we, we want you to make the decision that you feel most confident in. And we believe that that's by giving you all of the options. But we do our research so that we're ensuring that these can, you know as much as you. Possibly can about these candidates. Um, along with that, once the application closes. On this first option, we will come into a board meeting. We will present the applicants to you, anything we've found about them. New this year, we're really excited. We are doing background checks now through a background checking company called Baker U-Banks. So, um, we will only be doing this with, if you, with your final candidates. Because it is a cost per candidate, but that is something new this year. We also, with the same organization, we'll be doing social media searches through them. So they keep it very neutral. They search social media. It will highlight any mention of, they, they have like a list of. About twenty topics like drugs, you know, weapons, um. Bad words, things like that. And they will highlight any kind of post or anything they see on the internet and, and send that to us. Now, sometimes it's not a bad thing and maybe they were talking about a drug forum that they spoke at or something like that, but it brings everything to light. So hopefully, you know, we don't miss those things and it gets discovered by someone else. So at that meeting, we'll present all of this material to you. You'll be able to see it. We'll help you, um, go through all of that. And then at that meeting, the board will decide. Who they're moving forward to whatever the next round is. And at that point in time, ISBA steps away and then the board takes over from there. Um, these next two options are fairly the same. Both of them are full searches. So we help you with everything I mentioned in option one, but then we continue on and we'll help you with. Semi-finalist round and a finalist round or just a finalist round depending on what you kind of decide. So we, um. Communicate with the candidates and let them know what's going on. Um, we do that with opt, with all options. We are kind of the go between the board, um, and everything so that the candidates know what's going on. But we'll communicate with the candidates, get interviews scheduled. If, if and when the board decides to do district visit, visits, we. Communicate all of that information with them. I usually work with, um, a board. It's either the board chair or the board clerk typically, or someone on the board who feels passionately and I, they're kind of my go-between of. Here's what days we want to bring people in. This is the times, things like that, some of the smaller details. Um, and I'll communicate with the candidates, ensure they know everything's going on. And then we'll be at any time you're meeting to do anything involving your superintendent's search. We'll be in the district. Or available by phone, whatever you prefer, helping you out. So that means that when you get to the finalist round and you're ready to. Interview your final candidates, we will come in and we will assist you with whatever that final round looks like. Typically, boards will do kind of like a district visit day where they'll bring the candidates in. They'll do a district tour, show them around some schools or all of the schools, depending on how long you have or want to make it. Um, they'll do some forums. It, it differs school district to school district typically. But I always encourage that the board does some kind of forum or meet and greet with your community as well as your staff. Um, and whoever else you decide you want to involve in that. We can make it as broad as one forum where everyone's invited. Or narrow it down so that it's a forum for, you know, your district office staff, your, your transportation staff. Your, your teachers, whoever, however you want to do that. We are happy to work with you. And then we also, um, will sit in on your interviews. We don't provide any kind of thoughts or anything. But we're kind of just there to answer any questions that you may have, um, that may come up in the interviews. And just there as someone that you can bounce questions off of or if. Something comes up that's never happened before, we're kind of there to help in that regard. And then we're with you until you make your final decision. Um, so that's the option two. And then option three is the same, other than at the end, once you've hired your next candidate. And you're feeling excited and ready for this person to come in and, and lead your school district. Um, once they start, we will conduct what we call a team building workshop with the board and the new candidate. And, um, what this board, what this workshop does is it just helps the board and the candidate get on even footing with one another. Everyone knows expectations. We generally go over, um, what the candidate, or what the new superintendent expects from the board. What the board expects from the new superintendent, how you want them to be communicating with you, how often. You know, things like that so that it's not, you know, six months down the road. It's like, well, you never did that, but it was never actually. Articulated correctly. And what we found with this is that it helps you with kind of creating some goals for your evaluations. Um, when it comes around to that first year evaluation and it just really helps the new superintendent and the board feel. Comfortable with one another right off the bat rather, and rather than, you know. No one knowing how to address or talk about things. Well, we kind of come in and facilitate that for you. And make sure that questions are being asked that should be asked and, and that you're feeling comfortable with one another. So that's what that third option is. Um, each of these options we, um, provide do have some form of reimbursement through the State Department of Education. Um, through your continuous reimbursement fund. So the first one had, you can get reimbursed up to five hundred dollars for that search. The second one is up to two thousand and then the third one is up to three thousand. Um, and. That is basically kind of a quick overview of the search process. What this timeline in front of you is, is just. Kind of what you'll want if you were to work with ISBA, um, after your meeting today, when you decide. The board will want to start thinking of, or your designee, whoever will want to kind of start thinking of. When you want to open your search, when you want to, um, close your search. One of the other things that we offer as part of any package is that we will help you create a survey that you can send out. At the beginning of your search or before you begin your search and you can send it again to whoever you choose typically. It's everyone in your community, your staff, parents, everyone. But we also can do them tailored. So we can do more than one if you prefer, um, however you prefer. We have a template that's, it's, it's really. Four questions, super simple. We want to make it easy for people to take, but it helps get a good idea of what, um, your community, your staff. Everyone like that is looking for in the next superintendent and can help you kind of guide your decision-making throughout the process. As well as when you get to the point where you're getting ready to interview candidates, it helps you maybe create some interview questions. So that you're ensuring you're asking what is important to, um, your patrons. Um, so we'll do that. You'll want to decide when that is. And then, um, as we go through and get closer to whenever your deadline is for when the application closes. We'll want to talk about when that board meeting to review applications is. And then at that board meeting, once you review applications, you'll want to. Discuss what the next steps will be. Is that a semi-finalist round or do you feel comfortable enough with your candidates that. You feel like you have a solid three to four candidates, you want to move forward and just bring them in as finalists. And at that point in time, you'll. Decide on dates for that. So some of these are kind of open-ended dates, just a timeline, but others we can get a really solid date ready. And I do recommend that for the brochure so that when candidates are looking at your opening, um, they're seeing. What, how, when they should be expecting to hear from the board, how long they should be expecting the process to take. Um, that helps them plan as well and it's transparent for your community as well. So, um. That is basically our superintendent's search process in a nutshell. Um, does anyone have any questions for me?
Trustee Butler, any questions?
Yes, Chairman Manning, I do.
Okay, what do you got?
Um, Ms. Russell, thank you for being here tonight and presenting this. Um, I was curious if, if we can kind of pick and choose. Um, kind of an à la carte type of situation, or maybe we want to do like an option one, just to help get us going. Um, but then maybe afterwards still do that workshop. Um, and, and if that workshop would actually be qualified for the training where the training money comes from the state and we could use that to, to pay for that.
Absolutely. You can, uh, still do the option one and we can, the training we really. Recommend is something that every board with a new superintendent should do. So we're, we are not going to say no to having. Um, you do that training because we do feel like it really helps everyone get on even footing. So. If you were to choose option one, we would be happy to come in and still conduct that training for you. And then the other thing too is if you were to choose option one and kind of get through some of the process and realize, oh man, it would be nice to have ISBA. Assist us with the rest of the process. You can always add on the other half, um, at a later date. So it's really up to you. And I'm not, I'm not going to leave you high and dry if you were to do option one. And once you're, you're done with that application review meeting, you're never going to hear from me again. I'm here to help you. I want you guys to be successful. So even if you do option one and you have questions as you. Get into like the finalist part of your search, I will be happy to answer them. I just won't be as hands-on in the district attending the meetings as maybe I would if I were doing options two or three.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Kristi Robertson.
Yes, thank you. Uh, Ms. Russell, um, this is, uh. Seems very complete, which is like, um. Helpful because the idea of searching on our own is like overwhelming and you guys have, um. A plan and you've probably used it for quite a few years in quite a few districts. And, um, one of the things that just popped into my mind is do you have references? Like could we call the board at, you know, school district XYZ and say, how'd it work for you?
Absolutely.
Can we get a list of maybe some in the recent past that have used this plan? Or one of the options from you. And you don't have name names now, but it's just like, we could get something like that and call the, the board president. Um, or the chairman of some school district that is maybe comparable to ours.
Absolutely.
Okay. Cause I think that's always helpful is to call somebody and say, how did it work for you? You know, and, and, uh. Look at that and, and what would you have, um, wanted different or whatever. That's my question slash statement. Thank you.
Trustee Pusina, any thoughts?
I'm glad that there's a map.
A map, I like that.
Yeah, as it's, yeah, it could be overwhelming. It is the first time that we, you know, well, I, I know that. Um, Chairman Manning, you've gone through this process before, but this is the first time I looked at something like this and it's. And by looking at this, it looks almost like maybe a six to seven month process. Is it typically that, Ms. Russell, or have some districts, you know, done it in less time or?
Yeah, well, first of all, I'm glad you mentioned that. Um, this kind of helps you feel less stressed. Because what we really are trying to do here is help you feel.
Less stress.
Less stress. Yes, that's why we're here. We want to take some of the weight off of your shoulders and help you with that. So. Um, that's why we do a lot of the communicating and the behind the scenes planning. But at the end of the day, the board is the one making every decision. ISBA stays neutral on the whole thing, but we just kind of help you make sure that everything's happening as it should. You're following open meeting law. Um, and you're doing everything by the book. Um, and then, sorry, remind me, what was your, the second part?
The, the timeline, six months?
Oh, yes.
Sure. Are there some searches that take less? Is it because they're smaller districts, bigger districts or what? Can you tell us about that?
I have done many searches and every search's timeline is very different. So some it, it moves very quickly. They leave the position open for only a few weeks and within about two and a half months, they've hired someone. Um, and some leave it open much longer. It's, it's really up to, I, I would say it's two things. It's timing of when you're able to open your search or start your search. So you guys are ahead of the game right now. Thinking about it in September, it gives you time to, um, you know, get a, a brochure created. Do a survey of your community and really be thoughtful about things. And then I recommend that the board at least. Opens the application for at least a month, if not a little longer, especially if you're starting a little earlier. It just gives. Um, candidates a little more time to really think about it. It gives you a wider range of time. Sometimes candidates haven't yet decided maybe when you open that they want to look for a job yet, but maybe in three weeks. They've decided they're ready to look somewhere else, um, for whatever reason. And so, um, I do recommend at least a month. But I've done shorter than, and it's worked out just as, as well for the districts. So, um, like I said, you guys are ahead of the game. Here, you're early, um, and we can really take time to be thoughtful with the process. And like I said, we're on your timeline. We, we're just here to help. So, um, what, whenever you decide. Whatever you decide, myself or someone else in the ISBA office will be sure to be at all of your meetings and assisting you. Through the process so that you, um, feel confident that you've done everything correctly and have the right person leading the district.
Okay, thank you. A follow-up, um, just remark, um, Chairman Manning. I want to, uh, I just wanted to thank Dr. French for letting us know, you know, it's important to get started. So it's not like a quick at the end of the year and, you know, because you didn't have to. But I, I appreciate that, you know, giving us the timeline so that we can have the survey. So it's, you know, it's very complete and it's, it's open. And, you know, everyone has this, has the opportunity to apply. And so I appreciate that a lot.
Well, you're welcome. I think also it's a good way to start planting the seed. Cause there are people who may not have ever considered it. So we, at least we're getting the seed planted and then you do have time.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Chairman Manning.
Yeah, Kristi Robertson.
I have a follow-up, uh, question. Is that, so in this format or close to it. How long has the ISBA been doing this?
We have been doing this. So I myself have been doing this for three years now. This, this will be. I'm possibly my fourth year of searches, but I've been with ISBA for four years. Um, and we've been doing this for about ten years now. Um.
I see that now.
Yeah, yeah. So, um, it's been, we help. At least, we have about at least six districts a year that we help. Usually it's far more than that. Um, just with, it, it's that time where. We're seeing a lot of retirements, um, coming. So we, we have a lot of staff who are familiar with this process. Not just myself. Um, our executive director, Misty Swanson, she used to oversee this service. So she's very familiar with it. As well as we have two, um, board development specialists who also have, have. Expertise in this and then some consultants as well. So, um, we've got a, a, a great team of staff members. Ready to assist.
Not your first rodeo.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I've got a question, um, Katie, about the, uh. You said the discounts or something, um, it was through the various different brands for like the state department or the legislature. That if like an option one, it was a thousand dollars, two was two thousand and.
No, it was five hundred.
You just make it higher.
This one's unclear.
Uh, okay, so it was five hundred for option one. And then what was option two? There's. Two thousand, okay. And then option three was, was it three?
Three thousand.
So is it the five hundred plus the two thousand plus the three thousand or if it's just you go of option, option three, then the total is, um, three thousand, it's, um.
Reimbursed.
Reimbursable.
Yep.
Three thousand.
Okay.
So this, excuse me.
Yeah, Kristi Robertson.
So is that, do we apply for that through the ISBA?
So.
Or is that part of the process?
Yep. It's like if you were to conduct board training with ISBA or any other, uh, certified board trainer through the state. We will provide you, um, at the end of your search with the reimbursement sheet and then you, whoever. Typically submits that to the SDE will be in charge of that and they'll they'll process it the same way.
Thank you. So this is an action.
When you get, and when you get ca- question for you, when you get candidates that come in, do you, does a does a district pay to fly them at any time?
It depends. Some districts do, um some districts decide to do that, some districts. Um decide not to that, some will decide to pay for some. Parts of the travel and not other parts, so. Um it's it's really up to the board. What we do. When you get ready to bring candidates in is we can do a travel analysis of where they're coming from. And, you know, if the if we believe they'd have to fly or drive or whatever that may be. Um and present that to you so that you can see. How much you were should be expecting. Some districts cover the full cost, some will cover like fifty percent, seventy-five percent. I mean, it's up to you to decide what you wanna do there. And then some will just provide or just pay for travel then and it's up to the candidate to find. Um out lodging during that time, some will pay for everything. Um so again, it it's up to you, but I'll. Myself or someone in our office will put put together some kind of. Comparison for you so you can see where everyone's coming from and um how you wanna do that, because some people may. Live in Idaho and they don't need to travel to fly, but they still are driving a significant amount of. Time, so um you may decide you just wanna do mileage reimbursement too, and we just calculate that based off of the state mileage reimbursement.
I guess personally, I'm I'm thinking about the uh. You know, the the cost for the 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 option three. Uh which is nine thousand seven fifty minus three thousand, which is reimbursable. Um honestly, I'm I'm gonna use the word streamline. Um it streamlines the process and uh to have somebody with us start to finish. Um who knows the process, who can walk us through, that's I'm leaning towards that direction. So that's just my thought at the moment.
We've all gone miles.
Any thoughts about which option we might do, or if we want to go with ISBA, if we don't wanna go with ISBA, if we wanna go something else? We wanna have. Somebody else do that?
We want no flies.
Um Chairman Manning, I, yeah, I feel that the connection. I I I like the, I would like to use ISBA because I feel that they know our district. You know, that that um they've helped us and they know us and they. You know, it it the I think there's a lot to say about when. You know, um the person that's helping us find a superintendent. Is close by and they know, you know, the highs and lows of what our district has gone through and um. I would, that's who I would, I I would choose ISBA. And then I also agree with you about. You know, the the cost, sometimes it's worth it. To, you know, just to have a path from beginning to end. You know, I've noticed, yeah, when I sew something, sometimes I don't have. Pant legs or whatever, you know, and so it's nice to have the whole thing, the whole process. Um and have guidance. I'd like to say that I do this all the time, but I don't. But I I just would prefer to have professional folks. Um see us from beginning to end. That's my opinion, my honest opinion.
I'm not sure you understand the pant the pant legs analogy, huh?
Oh, sometimes you can sew them closed. If you don't know, if you don't read all.
The pants and sewn closed.
Yeah, so.
Chairman Manning.
Yeah, Mr. Manners.
Um I I think I'm in in agreement. I I like the fact that ISBA is. A known entity to us and we are to them. And I think the proximity of Caldwell School District to. The ISBA office in Boise has helped because. Um, you know, there's the familiarity of. You know, Ms. Russell, did you say you live here in Caldwell? That's pretty handy and um. Also, I know in my professional life is the idea is when you need a professional, hire a professional. And they are the professionals at this, not us. And I would be leaning towards uh making a motion to uh hire ISBA search. Whatever the proper term would be, superintendent search, and to vote for the option three would be. My uh feelings.
Chairman Manning.
Trusty Butler.
Um just had a thought and and I I do echo, you know, sentiment with um with the others about ISBA. Um and their their trusted service that they've provided many districts, all districts over the state. I'm I'm only slightly hesitant uh because I'm not there in person and so I don't have the information in front of me. Um in terms of all the the option costs and I guess. Because I'm not there and uh Trusty Godina is not there, that we potentially table it for a final decision. Um until the next regular board meeting. Just so that we have time to review all the information, since we don't have it digitally in front of us.
Yeah. Okay. You're leaning to trusty butter.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, I I don't care with that.
You're not gonna shut the door, sorry.
This is your only option, your only time.
All right. So Chairman Manning, I would like to make a motion to. Uh table this action for tonight and if we could put it in on for next meetings.
October thirteenth.
October thirteenth. Yes, and then, yeah, we can get a a copy of the information to go to Trusty Butler and Trusty Godina.
Thank you.
What was that emotion? My second.
Okay, motion by my shirt, Pusina, second by Trusty Robertson. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any motion carries?
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation.
A definite maybe, if that might maybe. Okay. Um Continuous Improvement Plan, Dr. French.
Yep, um trustees, so as you know, every year is we're required to. Submit our continuous improvement plan to the state. What you have in your packet tonight is the update of our plan and. Our goals and you, I also included the actual. So you'll notice our mo- our goals are set for the most part to be at or to be at at the state averages. And you'll see the actual to the far right, but this is the continuous improvement plan. That we have submitted every year and it's due in October. And a few questions, we did change some goals. We added a fifth grade reading goal uh last year. And there will be changes to the IRI. Because we've changed the platform, so it won't be iStation anymore, it'll be AMIRA. So you'll see a change possibly. In, well, next year, the continuous improvement plan. So it will be AMIRA, but I did note that it's moving from iStation to AMIRA. Yeah, I, yes, uh well, you should, the public should be able to see it.
Yeah, you should be able to click on that.
It was just, I mean, I, okay. There you go.
Oh my gosh.
Okay. And then most of this data you can find on the state report card. For the district, that's, so it's. Housed there, that's where I get a lot of the information and then the graduation information is on the state. Board site and or from emails that I've received from the state board.
So the action items to just approve those? Oh, this is what you're talking, the IRA.
Yeah, so the scores you see are based on iStation. Or cha- that's this year we're starting, will you be using AMIRA? And I believe, well, the elementary schools are in a, like a beta testing, they're trying it out, kids getting used to. The format of the online test and then they start testing officially in October.
Oh, okay.
My computer's just started to restart on me.
I experienced that myself.
I knew that earlier.
Dr. French, have a question.
Yes.
Uh just in that that vein of talking about istation and AMIRA, is that uh is that dictated by the state of what testing structures we use?
For the IRI, yes, they, last year they had, well, I guess it's been on more than a year. They had a working group looking at a new test. Plot, testing platform for the reading and. Um Melissa Lingan was part of that. She was in that working group that helped review the different platforms the state was looking at. And they settled on AMIRA last year and they've just rolled it out this fall.
Okay, so that's chosen at the state level, not the district level?
That is correct. It's required by the state.
Okay, thank you.
If you scroll down a little, let's see if I'm, is it in my noting, rotation or fourth grade? Okay. Yes. So we all have the these tests are state-driven to the IRI as a state test, ISATs. And then we chose to add a fifth grade reading test. We're using iExcel, which is a software plug program that. Jefferson uses. And we're using that one. It is not state-required, but it helps give us an idea of where they are in fifth grade reading. And then graduation, that's a s- obviously state requirement, which is a good requirement and. And then uh the state is, we do have to. We are required to report our chronic absenteeism, so. I appreciated Mrs. Bookerman speaking about the importance of attendance. So I, principals are addressing to the best of their ability, the importance of kids being in school.
Any, any questions from the board?
We're gonna go for a special education services. Yep.
Okay, at this time, I would take a motion to approve the continuous approval plan.
Chairman Manning. I move to approve the continuous improvement plan.
Okay, motion by Trusty Robertson. Do we have a second?
Second.
That's your first thing, a second. Any further discussion? All's in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion for carries. Uh okay, the God we trust signs, Dr. French.
Yes, um thank you, Chairman Manning. So I was contacted by Jody Arnold. And in regards to Idaho Code thirty-three, one forty-one, national motto. She would like to donate in God We Trust signs for each school to display. I did include the Idaho code in your packet so that you could um review it. Miss uh Arnold could not be here this evening and I told her I'd be glad to present this to you. She did send a um a draft or mock-up of what that sign would look like. And let's see, hopefully you can open that. Oh, there we go. Yeah, it might show up in your download, so check up in your download.
Oh.
And there you go.
Dr. French, did we have any um information on the size of them or how they're, how they're able to display?
Yes, I do both.
How and where?
Okay, well, where they are displayed, it it has to be in a conspicuous place, so the school needs to put it in a. A plate, an obvious place. It's so really the school decides where that is placed, as long as it's. Idaho Code thirty-three, one forty-one. It, um it, yes, and. I did, let me look, I had an email. I thought I copied that on there. That she had shared. The size. Of the poster. Yeah, um okay, so yes, the plan is to provide a sign for all schools in the Caldwell District. The sign will have an American flag in the background. With the words in God We Trust in black over the flag and a black border to frame the sign. She did not have the size yet, but the maximum size will be two feet by four feet. So that's what she's hoping for. I will say Canyon Springs already has this um. National motto up in their school or has, it was donated to them previously. So I let Mrs. Arnold know that and that would see eight schools that she would. Like to, uh that she would have, that she would like to donate to. I I I don't know, she may wanna still donate to Canyon Springs, but they do have one.
So then the action item is to approve.
Yeah, um I I felt like it was important that the board was aware that it met the requirements of the law. And that um it was accepting her gift. But I I do, I would just wanna make sure the board would um. Knew what it was coming from and. Yes. And then it, cuz the board has to make sure that it meets all those requirements, yes. Jody Arnold. Um Ms. Arnold, I I believe she does help. I I'm pretty sure she helps with Canyon County elections.
So do we know if she's part of an organization or if she's doing this individually or who's who's paying for it? Do we know anything about that or?
Chairman Manning, question.
Trusty Butler.
So Dr. French, on um subsection F. Of the code, it says the the size of the poster framed copy is approved by the educational institution, so does that mean we? Need to tell her what size is avail- that we can use or we would like to use?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. That would be great. She she had um would, the maximum would be two feet by four feet if.
But we could have smaller.
You could.
Or. Huge.
No, well, I I think.
That must be.
It's a poster size. It's supposed to be. That's poster.
That's not quite two feet by four. It's more like eighteen inches by. Eighteen by. Twenty-four, okay, so it'd be bigger than that.
Mm-hmm, but it's poster size, it's pretty um. Open to interpretation as to.
Uh cuz the small, those posters up there.
Those look like.
Mm-hmm.
Framed posters.
Okay, any further questions, comments from the trustees? So I would take a motion at this time. All I know is the board chair can't make a good motion, so whoever would like to make the motion?
Could we um, take a moment and could we table it until? Uh, Chairman Goldina's here, maybe give us a little more time, so that, and, and I, I apologize, I have not been able to get into this one, but. That would be my motion to table it for the next meeting.
Okay.
And could we? Could we get a size? A definitive size for them, the poster and. You know, and whether it's different for each school or, or whatever, um, or if it's just a uniform size for all schools. We just get some more details on what the poster is, things like that.
Yep, I'm like, hey Miller, now.
Okay, got a motion by, by trustee Christina, do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All's in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, we will table that until the next meeting.
Chairman Manning. I didn't quite get to unmute in time when you asked for discussion. Uh, I will just say that it does say that, um. Sorry, hold on. That it is a must and not a may. In the code. So having given the, being given a donation, so, but if we could get more details, that'd be great.
Thank you.
All right, thank you trustee Butler, um.
Did we vote?
Proposed job descriptions, so we voted to table.
I'm not sure we said.
Jessica, did they vote on that?
Thank you.
Well, he asked, uh, Andrew asked a question, so that.
Oh, thank you, um. Uh, thought we'd voted to table, but you know, maybe I'm wrong. So trustee, uh, Pacina, uh, motions and then trustee Robertson seconded. All right, all those in favor of tabling the God we trust sign until the next meeting, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any motion carries, um, Doctor French, proposed job descriptions?
Um, yes, this was a, a, a request by the board to discuss in. A little more detail at a work session, so, so that the board's aware on our job descriptions, we have. Um, caveat or catch-all that says and other duties as assigned, other duties assigned, it's on. Uh, almost all of our job descriptions and as we update, we're adding that to our job descriptions. And so when we think of a principal and Mrs. Burgerman feel free to jump on in. We can not list everything a principal does in a day or in a week. We do give, you know, some important items on that job description, they should, they should be doing this, this. But there are times like Mrs. Burgerman may have to go out and use a shovel and help clean snow. That is not on her job description, she may have to help with a protein spill because the custodian's somewhere else. We don't want kids walking through that, she will help with that. She also helps with, you know, when there's a situation in a classroom and a student needs to have a timeout. I know she has taken time, I mean, she will go down, she either sits with the student. Or helps has the student come walk with her and in those contacts with parents, right, there's, and then every school is different. So Mrs. Burkerman's school, you have the, the um, community school, the pantry. She has a role to play in how that works and how that looks, that is so different than what Sacagawea might be doing. So we, it is a catch-all phrase and it does catch some of those. Um, duties that principals. Take on because they want their school to be safe, they want it to be a healthy environment, they want instruction to take place. Um, Mrs. Burgerman, is there anything I'm missing, it is a phrase that you'll find in. All of these job descriptions, Caleb's. Just how we step in and help, I know that ta, or Mrs. Burgerman's been called out on weekends. So there, and that's what it's meant to be, is just to um, avoid. Someone saying, well, that's not in my job description, I'm not cleaning up that mess or. My job description doesn't say that.
Specific.
Right, that I am supposed to come in on a Saturday. When we've got a heavy duty snowfall or a. Something has happened, a window was left open, students got into the building, I know that that has happened. An alarm was set off, they come to help, um, otherwise we would. It, it's just so, we're just very grateful, I know I have been at Jefferson Middle School, it was a, I'm sure it was a Saturday or Sunday night. It was around nine o'clock at night, um, I met Karen there, I met Bernie there, they'd had a plumbing issue. So Bernie, there was no way to get ahold of a plumber at nine, nine-thirty at night. And Bernie was working on the plumbing to try to figure out what was causing the backup. And I just met with Karen, so those kind of things happen and thankfully Karen was there. Ta, you know, Tabby has made me aware of times on a weekend or holiday. That maybe we did get water through the vent, she will send me a text saying there's water coming in to the school. So that's, that's what that really is doing, is catching those types of. Uh, responsibilities that you may not even realize a principal's doing.
Questions from the board?
So, is that the, so we're looking at these and need to, they're an action item, I'm assuming to approve the. What is it?
The up three, the updates, and what I hear you saying is the major update is adding that phrase. We added that phrase, but we also added PBIS, the Positive Behavior Intervention Supports, that's been added because that is a. That's something as a district that we have agreed is the best way to approach student behavior issues. As a, as a community.
So mostly it's additions to the job descriptions that we've had.
Mm-hmm, yes. I don't know, Mrs. Jeanine, is there anything I'm missing on that?
No, but uh, we did get some.
Yeah, so.
And they all have that. And they always um. Have things like unique media districts like the PBIS world, things like that. So I don't think that it is uncommon um, to add those things.
So we do get it, the ISBA helps support our work on the, making sure our job descriptions. Are in line with state law, state code and then.
Well, as I was reading through these earlier, it, it was sort of uh. Ex- exhausting to realize how much the principals and the, it's like. You forget all of that little stuff and then you have the catch-all also, and it's like, oh my gosh. Like, those are big jobs and I commend all of them.
I, as I think through it, I think about, I, I, I'm thinking about that phrase. And thinking about um, when legislators, you know, they create law and bills, they oftentimes will ask. Um, when it comes to, to a bill, like where are the sideboards on the bill, like what are the protections built into the bill? What are the? Yeah, what are the, what are the protections and where, where are the boundaries, where is, where is the edge, you know, where is the edge of? This, um, you know, certain component of law, you know, does it bump, where does it bump into other parts of the law? Uh, where might it overlapped, overlap, um, so I'm thinking about sideboards when it comes to job descriptions and I'm thinking about. You know, and, and the percent, and for example, the, the principal one on page five, where it says perform other duties as assigned. What are the sideboards to hold the district accountable for assigning duties that are? Responsible, that are within the, you know, um, the norms. Um, you know, could the district feasibly, I'm not saying they would. Um, I'm not saying they would, but could the district tell a principal, for example? You know, we really need you to teach a class as well and then we really need you to do like garbage at lunchtime. And we really need you to do, you know, other, you know, on and on different kinds of lists of things. Um, and. Where, where? Um, yeah, where are the, where are the sideboards, where are those, because. For example, there are, there are other board policies that talk about, you know, transferring staff, administrative staff in particular. And the protections that, that are there, um, but where, where do we draw the line? Who draws the line, when do we draw the line as far as? You know, uh, duties that may. May have gone really far past, you know, how do, how do we determine that, I'm, I'm just, I just wanted to have that conversation.
Um, Chairman Manning, trustees, well, I would say Mrs. Bookerman probably has taught a class. Because a sub, somebody was ill and she covered the class. And not that that's something that we would, you know, want to have happen all the time. But I know she stepped in to make sure things were operated until either a sub could be found and or someone could come in. But the student safety is our number one and of. I would not reach out to Mrs. Burkerman and say, we need you to teach this class. However, we have reached out to her and said, hey, can you provide some professional development training? To other principals when it comes to teacher evaluations or to teachers because of her skill set in that area. I, I think really what you have, you, we have principles that in Caldwell. That go above and beyond and to say, don't do that, I think that then, that's probably when we'd get pushed back like. Oh, well, we don't want you in the class, find somebody else to sub, I cannot imagine having that conversation with Mrs. Bookerman. I think she would make sure there was coverage and then she would reach out to Mrs. Jeanine. And either we try to find a sub that day and or would have coverage for that, I think everybody here that's, uh, you see, seated except for Cheryl. Well, maybe Cheryl, but during COVID, everybody here was either helping out at lunch because we didn't have support, we didn't have the staff. And or covering a class and or there was, it was just all hands on deck. And not that we would take advantage of that, I think you would hear about it if people were feeling like. They were being asked to do something.
Too much, too long.
You, you're right, but most everyone has just. Gone above and beyond and I appreciate the sideboards, I think. It would be, I don't know if anybody's been abused by, I think Esther might have abused everybody because we were, not Esther, but COVID. Was really difficult and um, going forward, however, I do see, I mean, I had, I know there are. Folks at the high school who have covered classes until they can get coverage because somebody is ill and they have to go. Um, but be, it's worse to leave the class unattended, so. It, the abuse, I, I don't know, every principal. E- every administrator owns their building, basically, they have such a personal interest in the success of their students. That they want it to be the place where kids are safe and are learning. Yeah, I, I'm really, I don't know how to answer that for a principal, I know they go above and beyond and they work more contract days than they have. There's not one principal that does, that works their contract, just that, I. Well, sadly, I might be, I might text them or email them when they should be on break, I've had them. Over the summer, they're on vacation and they are texting or saying, hey, this is going on, I think Mrs. Burgerman is an excellent example of somebody who. May have needed some time off, um, but we all knew, I mean, she was still texting and emailing us. Um, prior to maybe possibly a surgery and those are the things, it's really difficult to say. We say, oh, don't text her, let's just see how she's doing. But it's hard to say, don't be invested in your school, does that, I'm, I, I'm not making, it, it's just more. It's, it's just their, the passion they have for their buildings and of course, you, you know, you. We have these very intelligent, highly paid, well, okay, very intelligent, well-paid. Um, instructional leaders who make sure that lunch happens, I've seen them out giving the ketchup. I've seen them out helping hand out forks and nothing, nothing is demeaning. It's what we do to have kids have a successful experience at school. And then they go back and get to work and then they're here till five and six o'clock at night.
I need to say that, you know, I, I felt supported knowing that we may do need to reach out and say, I need help with this. Because we're shit, I felt confident reaching out and that each of these guys is saying. This is where we're at, I need help, this because of this, uh, because we get to that point at times where. You do need help, but be specific and precise and know. When we get to that point.
Okay, the questions, comments from the board?
Chairman Manning.
Trustee Butler.
Um, I feel like there's, I do appreciate your, your thoughts and your framework about, you know, providing guardrails and, and. Being careful not to overextend our staff, um. But I also have um, a feeling that, you know, I've got family members that work in HR. I've got family members that are searching for jobs right now and this frame, phrase, perform other duties as assigned. Um, has become standard practice across all industries. This is not something that is unique to um, to Caldwell School District, it's not unique to education. Um, it's just become a standard clause in, uh, you know, across all employment. Uh, and so I think that's important to, to keep in mind as well, that we're not doing anything out of the norm. We're actually, it looks like we're trying to align things to become more in the norm. Um, and then I guess that's just my take on it, is this is not something different, this has just become standard practice. Um, across all industries in HR.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Okay, I would take a motion to um, approve the proposed job.
Trustee Manning. I move that we approve all of the proposed job descri- descriptions that are listed.
Okay, motion by trustee Robertson, do we have a second?
Second.
Hey, speaks. Okay, second by trustee Butler, do we have any further discussion? Um, all's in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, we are going to move here into executive session, um, vice chair, Christina.
Okay, so. Chairman Manning, I make a motion.
Chairman Manning, I make a motion to enter into executive session as per Code seventy-four dash. Two zero six one B to consider the evaluation dismissal or disciplining of. Or to hear complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, individual agent or public school student. Employee number two zero two five dash zero nine dash two two A. Employee number two zero two five dash zero nine dash two two B. And employee number two zero two five dash O eight dash two five. And then also um. Included in the motion is to go into executive session per Idaho Code seventy-four dash two zero six. One JJ to consider labor contract matters authorized under section seventy-four dash two oh six A. One A and B Idaho Code.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Trustee Robertson with a second. Um, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Trish Robertson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Madi Salapacina?
Yes.
Chairman Travis Manning?
Yes.
Trustee Manuel Godina? And trustee Andrew Butler.
Yes.
Okay, we are in executive session. Hey, what's up? I'm just gonna put you on the mic that's next to me.
Did you hear the motion, trustee Butler?
No, I wasn't getting any sound.
Okay, so I'll I'll repeat the motion. Uh, so per Idaho Code seventy-four dash two zero six one B to consider the evaluation dismissal or disciplining of. Or to hear complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, individual agent or public school student. As per employee number two zero two five dash zero nine dash two two A. Uh, I make a motion for the board to. Uh, to approve the and or to accept the district's recommendation to release uh this employee from their contract.
Uh, okay, that's a motion. Do we have a second?
I second it.
Second trustee Robertson, any further questions?
But we did a a roll call, right?
Don't do questions after your motions.
Not. The discussion was in executive session.
Oh, that's true. So then. Further questions, comments? Yeah.
Okay, trustee Trish Robertson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Madi Salapacina?
Yes.
Chairman Travis Manning?
Yes.
Trustee Manuel Godina? And trustee Andrew Butler.
Okay. And then um going along per Idaho Code seventy-four dash two oh six. One B to consider evaluation dismissal or discipline enough or to hear complaints or charges brought against. A public officer, employee, staff member, individual agent or public school student. As per. Uh, employee da- employee number two zero two five dash zero eight dash two five. Uh, I make a motion to approve the district's decision to extend the administrative leave on this employee.
Okay, motion by Vice Chair Piscina. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Roll call, if you would, roll call.
Trustee Trish Robertson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Madi Salapacina?
Yes.
Chairman Travis Manning?
Yes.
Trustee Manuel Godina? And trustee Andrew Butler.
Okay, and then per Idaho Code seventy-four dash two zero six one B to consider the evaluation dismissal or disciplining of. Or to hear complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, individual agent or public school student. Regarding employee number two zero two five dash zero nine dash two two B, this is information only. And then per Idaho Code seventy-four dash two zero six one JJ. To consider labor contract matters authorized under section seventy-four dash two zero six A. One A and B Idaho Code. And this would be um. To. This is uh my motion would be to request a limited reopening. A limited reopening of the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six master agreement to address. Only the article three uh regarding salaries. That is my motion.
Okay, motion by tra- Vice Chair Piscina. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Robertson. Any further discussion? Roll call if you would, Miss Watts.
Trustee Trish Robertson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Madi Salapacina?
Yes.
Chairman Travis Manning?
Yes.
Trustee Manuel Godina? And trustee Andrew Butler.
Yes.
Okay. At this time, we uh will take a motion to adjourn.
Make a.
We want to adjourn.
Way to go, trust.
I second.
Trustee Robertson with a second. Uh, any further discuss? I got a question.
Yeah.
Uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? This meeting, adjourns. Thank you, trustee.